We are now broadcasting.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the Maplewood City Council meeting for Tuesday, April 28th, 2020. First item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all. Okay, thank you. Everyone's standing, I hope, for that roll call, please.
Councilmember Crater? Here. Councilmember Fockingham?
Here.
Mayor Greenberg?
Here.
Councilmember Pardini?
Here.
Councilmember Phillips?
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Here.
Councilmember Wood? I saw her say yes.
I know, I'm getting half of the meeting, just so you know, so.
I got that.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor Quorum is present.
Thank you. Next item is the approval of the council agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
The agenda is approved.
Mayor, if I could interrupt briefly, obviously, we're holding this meeting remotely, and hopefully, we won't have to continue to do this much longer, but under Section 610.015 of the Missouri Sunshine Law, members of the city council who are not physically present in the council chambers can participate and vote on all matters that come before them when there is an emergency, and the nature of the emergency must be stated in the minutes. I'm simply interrupting you, let the minutes reflect, that obviously, we're still in the midst of this COVID-19 pandemic. The governor for the state of Missouri, as well as St. Louis County Executive, still has a stay-at-home order limiting the meetings and gatherings of people to avoid the spread of the coronavirus. That is why we are participating remotely. So just let the minutes reflect that, and that way, all of the members of the city council can vote on all matters. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the city attorney. Item number six is a public hearing to hear citizens' comments on a request to amend conditional use ordinance number 5889 by Nate Strength Councils to allow shared parking for All-Star Tattoo at 2801 Big Ben Boulevard. Is there anyone that would like to speak?
Mayor, we have 11 attendees, and we wanted to use, we talked last time, the raise-hand feature, if anyone would like to speak, if any attendee, raise your hand if you want to speak on this matter.
So, those 11 attendees, if you go to the upper right-hand corner, I'm on an iPad, for instance, there's a, under more, there's a feature to raise your hand. Do we have anyone that's raised their hand?
I'm, okay, Sean, am I missing anything?
Yeah, I don't see any raised hands.
I'm showing none, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and, you know, we do have two public forums coming up, so if someone's out there trying to figure it out, hopefully, they can do it by the end of the meeting, and provide your input. Item number seven is a public hearing to hear citizens' comments on a request by Schlafly Brewery to rezone 7260 Southwest Avenue from CB District to PUD District. Is there anyone that has raised their hand for that public hearing?
No, sir.
Okay, then we will move on to item number eight, which is the public forum, which is an opportunity for anyone watching tonight to address counsel on any matter of importance to the city. Is there anyone that has raised their hand for the public forum? Okay, and I'll remind those 11 viewers that they have an opportunity, after listening to our conversation, our proceedings, that they can also provide their feedback in the public forum, which is item number 17. So we'll move on to announcements.
I do have one announcement. Just a reminder to everybody, we're having curbside yard waste this week again, and again on May 11th, and then after that, we'll be having our weekly schedule again for the yard waste.
Okay, thank you for that. Are there any other announcements?
I have more of a question, Anthony, since Karen mentioned that. I know right now that bulk trash has been suspended. Is there a way for residents to dispose of large items, if needed, during this time?
We currently don't have a place. It's possible we could create some space at the garage. I will talk to Joel from Republic tomorrow and see if we end up storing it there temporarily, if they could just come by and pick it up. Probably be easier for them if it sits there for a while outside. I don't know why they wouldn't consume bulk yet, but I'll follow up a little bit more. We can get something out on social media, and I'll follow up with you. We have a place now, I think we would at the garage.
Okay, because there could be people moving out of the place, or something like that, that I know I have right now, because I'm emptying out a place, that, you know, I've got a mattress, box springs, chair, you know, items that I can't normally put out in the trash, but I have to get them out of here. So there may be other people like me that have a way to dispose of items.
I will find, I will find something out, Councilmember Crater, and we will, we will, we'll get something, because it's been a little long right now, even it has to be a, the problem is, you can't do the thing like we did with the yard waste, because the bulk items are too heavy. So, my view, they need to at least get out and do it once coming up, you know, maybe a week when we can advertise it. I'll start talking with Joel from Republic and say, we need a bulk trash pickup. If the rest of the council agrees, that's a priority, I think it is. I'll talk to her tomorrow.
All right. Especially since a lot of people have been spending their time at home, straightening up and organizing their homes, so. And, you know, I missed the Wednesday morning tour of Maplewood, the rummage sale, the free items that are left on the curb every Wednesday. So, anyway, are there any other announcements? Okay, item number 10 is the approval of the April 14th, 2020 city council meeting minutes and closed session minutes. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Thank you.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The meeting minutes and closed session minutes have been approved. Item number 11 is the discussion of the Sunnys Station Apartments, Sunnys Station Phase Two.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to go ahead, and I see GT Cozad, I'm going to go ahead and allow him to talk. GT, can you hear, can you hear us?
I can, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Is there anyone else I need to put on this to allow, do you need somebody else on here, or are you going to handle this yourself?
So, I guess it might not be a bad idea to unmute Brian Humes, he's the accountant with Clifton Larson Allen. Do you see him on there, just in case there's an accounting question?
You said Brian Humes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's a Hume.
I see Hume, I do see Hume.
Yeah, Humes, yep.
All right.
So we have, I know that we've got two of the Sunnys family members on this, my brother's on the call, Mark Murray from Armstrong Teasdale, and myself, and Brian Humes, who's with Clifton Larson Allen, who helped us update the spreadsheets. So, appreciate you unmuting him, too. Thanks.
I unmuted him, so I think he muted himself, so he is on.
Okay, great. So, I guess, you know, not everyone, I think, was there, Councilmember Phillips, I think, was at town. Do you, is there anything you want me to go through with regards to the PowerPoint, with regards to Phase Two, the design, before I go into a couple of the changes to the spreadsheet, based upon the questions from last meeting?
I'm fine, if everyone else is. I did review the video of the presentation earlier today, so.
Okay.
Yep, Steve.
Okay, great. So, we also gave Anthony, I think he sent in the updated spreadsheets for Phase One, IRR analysis, Phase Two, IRR analysis, as well as the summary spreadsheet. I thought it'd be important to go over the couple changes that were made, and they were brought up by you all at the last meeting. So we had Clifton Larson Allen coordinate, because I had done one of the spreadsheets with their help, and they had done the other two. So when we coordinated, one of the changes is on Phase One, IRR. We initially had the tax abatement amount at 350,000, and then ultimately, we had it increasing, whereas in the summary spreadsheet, we had it at 335, which means, they are, they are both now at 335. 335 was the actual number. The initial spreadsheet that we're using was an estimate when we were doing the first analysis of the, of the Phase One. And then on, and so that modified the rates of return slightly, and then on Phase Two, as you all correctly noted, too, we did not have in the replacement reserve amount of 60,000, like we had, we had a replacement reserve listed under Phase One. We are required to have the replacement reserve from head loan on Phase One. We are going to be required to have a replacement reserve on Phase Two. We don't know the exact amount, but 60,000 is our estimate right now. So that was put in there. That also slightly modified the internal rates of return. And then those numbers then should match with the summary spreadsheet. Overall, the gist of the spreadsheet with regards to the differences in the amounts going to the school district, et cetera, are still similar to what we presented for the first, from the first time we presented, a little over a month ago. But I'm open, Brian and I are happy to answer any questions with regards to the, to the spreadsheets. There's not any questions. I can also give you an update of what's transpired, just on our end, in the last month and a half. We have still been doing our best to push forward. As you guys might know, construction companies are still working, so we're working on finalizing subcontractor numbers. So we're working on finalizing the numbers for Phase Two. The engineering company, Pittsman's Frantic Engineering, has been finalizing the survey that we need, that we would need to submit if we were going to move forward with Phase Two. We've been continually working with our, with the broker, Gersman Mortgage, who will be the servicer to HUD. So we've been providing them information. One thing we're doing is having it, Rick might have to tell me in my ear, but it's, it's, it's not all the way a green building, but we're getting us, like a, either a bronze or a silver rating on this building, which we didn't have this energies, we didn't have as high of an energy star rating on the Phase One. We're trying to do a higher green rating on Phase Two, and right now, we've worked with a subcontractor on that process, and we think we have over enough points to qualify for this green certification. You never know until you are going through the process, and they do the analysis, so you always budget for more points than what you think you'll need, in case you don't get them all, but we've been going through. So, so a lot of those sort of soft processes, we've been continually doing throughout the last month and a half, while we were waiting, hopefully, have another meeting with you guys.
I had one question, specific to the numbers, and then one general question. This is Jenny. So I noted on this page three, that summary page, that in 2028, the numbers for Phase One, Porsche and Maserati were taken out, and then all the numbers that were right of that were shifted left, and then a different number added at the end, and I was just curious what, why that was.
Say that, say that one more time, I'm not.
I think it's the, I think it's the 10-year, 10 to 11-year, but in 2028, on page three, the, it happens again for Phase Two later on, but for Phase One, Porsche and Maserati, so there were certain numbers for 2028, but they were deleted. Then all the numbers that were after that were shifted left to fill in that space, and then a different number added to the end, and I was just curious why.
So Brian, you might want to weigh in, but I think, I think what this reflects is just the, is the specific deal we have in the redevelopment agreement, in that the first 10 years are at 100%, and then the next five years are at 50%. So I think it's a hardcoded 50% of the, of the abated amount is all we get, and then that's why, and then more, more at that time should start going to the city.
Yeah, I mean, they were just off, they weren't off, like, they weren't double or anything to half. They were off by like 5 to 10, 15 here and there. I just, I just didn't know if the calculation changed.
Oh, probably, probably because they, probably because they're still going up, and it's, they're still going up as far as a general increase in real estate taxes, and then halved. Maybe that's.
Well, I just, none of the rest of them changed. It was just kind of weird. I just didn't know. I just.
Yeah, so, so I just got a, I just got confirmation from Brian. It's, they went up the normal increase that we expect the county to increase them, and then they were halved.
Okay.
Brian, can you, can you hear us right now, Brian?
Oh, he muted himself again.
Okay, I just want to make sure I, I'm not muting him, man. I had.
He can hear, he can hear you. Yes, he did say to me.
Okay, okay.
And then my general question, I was just curious if, as a result of the current economic situation, if your underwriting has changed at all? Like, they're still predicting you'll get the rent ceiling and all that stuff, so your numbers aren't changing at all?
Yeah, as of right now, HUD, in general, across the market, we've been told, is still doing deals. You know, we don't know our, we won't know our interest rate that we have with them until we lock, which we can't do yet. One of the, one of the questions they're asking us is if we can confirm that we have abatement. That's part of their underwriting analysis, and we told them just what the, that we were going through a process of the city to ask for the abatement to be, the cap to be eliminated. But as of right now, everything still seems to be moving forward with HUD. We got our, several months back, we got, with the HUD process, it's interesting, because the first time we went through this, it took about two years to get the loan. This last time, it's, it's been faster. You do a preliminary submittal, which is enormous, an enormous amount of paperwork, and HUD doesn't give you the go-ahead to submit a final submittal, unless you really have sort of everything in a row, and they usually don't want to do it unless you have a market study done. And, and so, we expect that in the underwriting, they'll, they'll push back on a few things. Like, my guess is, where they might have estimated 13 months for lease-up, they might say, well, you guys need to have enough reserves in there for a 14-month or 15-month lease-up. So, or they might say, you know, that we need a little more working capital in reserve. We won't know that until they submit the final app, but that's what, that's what Gersman Mortgage has been telling us, they've been doing, just to, you know, just to be conservative in their approach, and make sure everything gets done. But that's it, nothing as far as not approving.
Okay, thank you.
And I should say, too, Phase One, you know, we're doing our best, we were thinking we might have some issues with the residents, just going through everything like everyone else has, and, you know, we've done things like, you know, we're not, we're not charging late fees or interest, you know, everyone can't do, you know, the crazy things like eviction, which we wouldn't even think about anyway, it's a federal rule, but we're also, we're not charging late fees or interest. We're saying that if people need time to pay over the month, you know, that it's not due by the 5th, we're giving them time to pay over the month. And really, for the month of April, we only had three people out of our whole complex that were a little behind, and, and they're making it up, so that's not much of an issue. We don't, we don't foresee much of a problem for May, too. So, so far with our residents on Phase One, it's been, it's been going pretty smoothly.
Can you remind me, the, so the IRR analysis, that is for your lender, right?
The IRR analysis, they like to see our financials, so they want, so one of them is, because we get audited, so we have to provide, we have to provide audited financials, no matter what, once we are complete with the project. But the second phase IRR is, was mainly to show, to show you all, just like the first phase, that they are similar, that we're, we're predicting similar rates of return, that we're not, you know, that we're not getting like, you know, a 25% return, still asking for abatement. We're trying to show you, in general, why we need the abatement to make the project work.
Okay, and for the Phase Two, you have the lower vacancy rate, and is that because you have more one bedrooms in the Phase Two?
I'm looking at the spreadsheet right now, give me one second.
I think it was like 11% in the Phase One, and 7% in the Phase Two?
She's asking about, there's a little bit lower vacancy rate predicted in Phase Two, I think, than Phase One.
They should be 7% in both phases. That's, that's our predicted vacancy as stabilized.
Okay.
Phase One is 11.
What your actual vacancy rate is in Phase One right now?
Phase One, right now, I think we're at only around 3% or 4%. I think we're at 96% or 7% lease. I'd have to look at the date. We just got a couple notices from May, but we had a lot, most, most renewals, so I'd have to see what the, sometimes there are spreadsheets, when they, when they're pre-leasing on vacancies, that they get noticed for up in advance. I don't know the exact number, but I know we only have like two vacancies right now.
Okay. And, and then on the phase, the third spreadsheet. So just to clarify, like, what we are looking at, it's sort of whether or not the abatement would end functionally between 2031 to 32 versus extend to 2037?
So, yes. So if, if all projects went out 15, 15 years, no matter what, Phase One and Porsche and Maserati, they will end after 2032, no matter what, because that, that will complete their 15 years. So that'll be the 10 years at 100, and five years at 50. And then Phase Two, that's under the assumption that we are complete in 2021, so that would be if we started building, let's say, late this summer. We think it's a 12-month build, and then the county, the county has to fully assess it, and we have to run the project through the Redevelopment Corporation to, to get the abatement. So then, if that all happens, which we would expect, unless we have some crazy delay on construction, then you're right, 21 would go for 15-year, I mean, that, the Phase Two would go for 15 years. And then the Porsche, second development in Phase Three, those, those are estimates on when, on when we think we'd start them, and then the 15 years from that point. You guys, with Porsche, because we don't own that lot, you guys have a deal with them where they have to have a building up, I'm pretty sure, by 2022. So that one, that one should start no matter what. And then Phase Three is just us predicting, trying to do something similar to Phase Two, and having that complete around 2023. For all I know, though, you know, it could be 2024, I'm just doing our best to show you the full build. And that, that would also finish, that would finish the remaining land. And if you could tell, Phase Three, it's like identical tax amounts to Phase Two, so it's like we're building the same complex.
Okay. Are there other questions for Mr. Cozad? If there aren't any other questions, then we can move on to item number 12.
Yep, GT, thank you. For the updated spreadsheet.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Everyone staying safe.
You as well.
Item 12, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, appointing Catherine Maloney to the Parks and Recreation Commission, and establishing her term of office is expiring June 30, 2020.
2022. Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Councilmember Crater?
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham?
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Pardini?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Resolution 20-15 is approved?
Okay. Item 13, please.
One quick question out, because it was brought up by councilmembers, as, as we're looking at this. We were talking about the $10,000, we're talking about putting into the utility assistance, and, and I want people to know, we've reached out to five to seven different entities to see if rent is possible. So, we are looking into that, because I know I've had at least two or three different councilmembers ask me that, and I will email out the agencies we've talked about, to make sure we get everybody. If you have other suggestions, we will contact additional people. But we are working on that.
Thank you.
Sure. Resolution, item number 13, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to submit the 2021 Community Development Block Grant application to the St. Louis County Office of Community Development.
Motion to approve?
Okay.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Councilmember Fockingham?
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Pardini?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood? Councilmember Wood? I think she throws up. I think so. Uh, Councilmember Crater?
There she is.
There she is.
Yeah.
I apologize.
Okay.
Yes. Resolution 20-16 is approved?
Thank you. Item number 14, please.
Bill 6138, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, and the ordinance 5573, as amended, Section 56-498, general provisions, subsection one of the city code, to allow shared parking agreements on parcels of land that are not under common ownership.
Motion to approve?
Okay.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Mayor Greenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Pardini?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Crater?
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham?
Yes.
Bill 6138 becomes ordinance number 5933.
Thank you. Item number 15, please.
Bill 6139, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, amending conditional use ordinance number 5889, to allow our tattoo to enter into a shared parking agreement.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Pardini?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Crater?
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham?
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg?
Yes.
Bill 6139 becomes ordinance 5934.
Item number 16, please.
Bill 6140, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing Bill 6140, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing a planned unit development district and approving a preliminary development plan and a final development plan for approximately 2.47 acres of land at 7260 Southwest Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Council member Phillips.
Yes.
Council member Schmidt.
Yes.
Council member Wood.
Yes.
Council member Crater.
Yes.
Council member Fockingham.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Council member Pardini.
Yes.
Bill 6140 becomes ordinance number 5935.
Item number 17 is public forum. Do we have anyone that's raised their hand?
I do not see any raised hands. Anthony?
I do not either. Thank you.
Okay. In that case, the public forum is now closed. Uh, item number 18 is council communication. Are there any, uh, communications from council members?
I, I had one. I just wanted to take a moment and say that, um, every day I feel so fortunate to live here because I see all the amazing things that people in our community are doing. And just wanted to highlight a couple. Um, you know, we, we're, an article about Pasco in Maplewood who came up with that RV trailer to help sanitize masks that they donated to, uh, SSM, um, Colonel Glennon and allowing them to, increase the amount of uses they can get out of their mask, which is amazing. Um, I wanted to highlight Miss, and I don't know if I'm pronouncing her name right, but Shayna Jones, who despite incredible heartache is out every day putting food out for other people and, uh, rain or shine and has an amazing attitude and at risk to herself. She is high risk. So, um, and then also, uh, Maple Good, which, um, has done so many things to help neighbors, to help, um, seniors by organizing cards to be sent to, uh, the senior home to, you know, providing meals to our firefighters and police, uh, matching healthcare workers with people. I'm just, I just wanted to highlight those things because it's a real crazy time and I just feel so lucky to live here. So.
Thank you, Jenny.
I second that.
Anyone else? Any other council communication? Okay. Uh, item number 19 is the mayor's report. Uh, Councilman Schmidt did mention that, uh, people were preparing meals for police and fire. Uh, are the police and fire departments accepting outside, uh, food? Do you know? Anthony?
I, I don't know. My, my understanding is they probably are. Jenny, did you say Maple Good is dropping those off?
They've done some and I see the fire department, the police department posts sort of, they've had a lot of posts lately where other people, just other organizations have donated food to them. So I'm not sure how far in advance they're, you know, if there's a schedule or anything like that, but I think.
And I, I do know that Sam's Walmart posts have also donated substantial amounts of whether it be cleaning supplies or different types of food. I, all three of those businesses have really stepped up.
Is, uh, Anthony, is the city doing well on, uh, personal protective equipment?
Yes, sir, we are.
And our, our, uh, supplies come from where?
They all come into the emergency operations center that's housed out of Baldwin and they're all separated based on, on need and who, who needs it the most. We obviously had some in store, but, um, that's right now, all PPEs are being, have come in from either FEMA, SEMA, and then they're distributed through EOC.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. As far as the mayor's report, I want to echo some of the things that, uh, Councilman Schmidt, uh, said, you know, uh, living on, you know, on the corner of Vine and Marshall, I've never seen so many people, uh, walking, bicycling. Uh, they're all doing responsibly too. At this rate, we might have to turn every street into a, uh, a greenway. Uh, and maybe we can eliminate cars completely. Yeah. But we'll, we'll save that, that discussion for later. Uh, and that, that's the, that concludes the mayor's report. A city attorney, do you have a report?
I have nothing to report, mayor.
Okay. City manager?
I have a few things in addition to my memo. First, I would like to let everyone know that can't see it. We have, uh, our number of attendees has been steadily increasing. It's, it's a nice option. We have 18 attendees tonight, um, which is more than I can remember council meeting in years. So just wanted to point that out. Mayor Greenberg mentioned we're moving spaces around earlier, uh, to try to create separation amongst employees and, and residents. Uh, I did have questions about the dog park. Um, you know, are, are we, that's one of our few parks, the dog park, the ice rink and the skate park, those are all closed. If, if in the future you guys decide you think maybe that should be something we should open, please let me know, but we are keeping those closed for now. If anyone wants to have discussion about that, any, anytime I'm well open for that, uh, if he will, if he opened quicker, it'd probably be the dog park of the three that I just mentioned. Um, so we're getting a lot of people that are going in anyway. So we had to change and we've even had police tape out there. They're still going in unfortunately. Um, pool opening, we talked about it in the past. Um, I've met with, uh, Teresa Probstings at the heights and we are, uh, we're coming up with plans to minimize personal contact should pools ever be open. We're going to, you know, purchase, uh, we could do the Plexiglas, we could do scanners. So we don't have to actually hold people's cards. They could walk by and do some scanning. We're even thinking of kind of a, a limited opening to where we would not have concessions to where, you know, you'd have additional contact, additional exchanging of, of money. So we are looking at all options right now. I haven't heard that we can't open when we, when we would typically do that. But I've also heard a lot of people throughout July 1st. As I hear more, I'll continue to update the council on that. The city is, I know the city of Ellisville, for whatever reason, is not going to open. They've already made that decision, but then there's others that are considering it, but, um.
What city was that?
Ellisville.
Okay. Are you receiving guidance from the county?
St. Louis County, the health department.
Yeah.
The street sweeper that we've bought many, many months ago is arriving tomorrow. Good news. We will resume street sweeping, uh, the first and third week of every month. So that has been a long time. We've had a fully operational street sweeper. Council member Fockingham can attest to that. The hydraulics many years ago broke in front of his house. We left a nice puddle for him. Um, and then, uh, onto my, um, my, the actual memo. Uh, does anyone have any thoughts about the citywide resident and business survey? Is it something we wanted to put in next year's budget and just postpone it? Or, um, I'd just like, at least, I'd like to at least get back to the firms that submitted and let them know. Uh, try to give them a little bit of a timeline if at all possible. I haven't, I talked to them, oh, six, eight weeks ago and told them I'd be getting back to them in April with an update. Obviously, you know, they understand what's going on right now, but I, I just didn't know where the council, uh, what their, what their thought was on, on survey.
I, um, this has been on my mind recently. I knew that we, um, that things have, not emergency items have gone by the wayside a little bit, but it's been on my mind to read the, um, to catch those. So I'm, I'm curious what everyone else is thinking about whether we want to read those and connect with them or, um.
My thoughts are, oh, sorry. Uh, my thoughts are that, you know, the Maplewood's landscape, um, will probably be drastically changed in a year. And, uh, I think the needs and concerns of citizens are going to be a little bit different. Um, yeah, it might not be drastic, but, but certainly, um, this pandemic has, uh, introduced a lot of things that we really haven't seen playing out yet. So my, my first inclination is to wait because, um, yeah, I think things are going to change. I mean, I'd hate to do it now. Most people probably wouldn't be able to do it or wouldn't have the time to do it. Um, but, but I think the concerns will be much different.
I tend to agree that, uh, certainly the, the business survey, uh, we need to figure out who's, you know, who's still going to be in business. And, uh, and I think everyone's needs, you know, business needs are going to change, you know, based on, uh, the economic setbacks that they've recently experienced. As far as the, the citizen, uh, survey, uh, you know, I'm actually willing to go forward with that. People have a lot of time to spend, uh, thinking, you know, thinking and responding to the, the survey. I don't know to what extent their needs are going to change. I think that their needs are just, the same needs just exacerbated by the, uh, by the economic situation. So, uh, as a hybrid, I would certainly postpone the, the business survey, but, uh, you know, I would like feedback from, from residents. Anyone else?
Well, I'm curious, does that, um, like, does that cause any problems to separate the two out? In terms of fee or in terms of just data? I mean, I'm just asking. I don't have an opinion.
I could talk with the various firms and see if they have, uh, any concerns or if there's any, any, if it would make any changes, if that's what the council wants.
I would, to answer Eleanor's first question, I would like to look through the proposals if we're going to move forward. I know they were very long. So if we're going to wait, I'll probably wait till we're closer to, but.
Well, I have already looked through them and I've already kind of gotten, you know, some ideas of what I think. Um, but, um, I just hate to, you know, to go ahead with it. Like Sean said, I don't really know if this is the best time to do it. I also had my concern about whether if we split it out, is it going to be, you know, weird? Because one company just lumped it all together, the, the price, you know, the business one and the citizen one. So I guess they could break it out for us or something. I don't know. But, so anyway, I just have mixed feelings about the whole thing, about whether to move forward or not. But, and maybe next year's budget might be better. I don't know.
You know, I mean. Sense to revisit it, like, to say no for now and revisit it in a few months and see what.
It is one, it is. It's 100% up to the council for now. I'm going to, uh, obviously pass forward into the next year's budget. If things slow down, I'll just, you know, it's, it's more of a friendly reminder. I know you, we have a lot going on. It's, I just didn't want, uh, I know in the past, the survey was kind of, um, you know, I know a lot of council members say, what was the story? Why has this not happened? I just want to make sure we don't lose sight. So I'll throw it on my calendar to revisit it in a couple of months and I'll at least call the firms and let them know that's what we're planning on doing if that is the general consensus with the council.
You might, uh, you, you might, uh, ask of the firms, um, the idea of splitting it up and what, what the implications would be, just so we have that information. Uh, you know, if, if in a month from now or a couple later on fall or something, we want to do a split survey, at least we would have that information of what, what the ramifications are for us, cost plans.
We'll absolutely do that and I'll update the council at the next council meeting.
Thank you.
I have nothing else to report.
Okay. Uh, item number 22 is a motion to hold a closed session.
Motion to hold a closed session for a personnel matter.
And a contract matter.
Okay, thank you.
Going to have that one too, and a contractual matter.
Thank you.
Any discussion on that? We have a motion in a second. Uh, we, uh, at this point, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, so at this point.
Mayor, roll call vote, I'm going into closed.
Thank you. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Council member Schmidt.
Yes.
Council, council member Wood.
Yes.
Council member Crater.
Yes.
Council member Fockingham.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Council member Pardini.
Yes.
Council member Phillips.
Yes.
The motion is approved and please note that I'll probably be starting that meeting in about three minutes. I need to make a phone call to alert people that will be in the meeting.
And do we need to just let the attendees know what's happening now? Like this, that this meeting is closing out?
Yeah, then we're done for the night in terms of attendees.
Yes, so.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, for coming and spending.
Yes.
Do we need a motion in a second, uh, to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Anthony, it's 8:18. Uh, why don't you, why don't we reconvene at, uh, 8:25?
That sounds good. I'll have it go a little before 8:25. I'll talk to everyone then.
Okay. Thank you. See you then.
Thank you. Bye.